Our guaranteed.
You staff based on the needs of your office.
Okay, so if he's gone.
This whole argument is dependent on guaranteed hours. What she is saying is, I need thirteen or fourteen or fifteen dollars an hour times sixteen hours a week times twenty-six pays. And that's, that, I don't, I don't agree with that, that equation.
Why not? I mean, she just pointed out that he's sick.
Because we don't guarantee hours. I'm not gonna guarantee.
With him being sick, I mean, because she does do this sixteen hour, I mean, she works four, four hours for four days.
I work, yes, Monday through Thursday.
Eight twelve.
Hours.
That's different than just calling in somebody for part-time. And, and the other ones that I'm, I guess I'm just, have to say this, the other ones that you gave the part-time to, or the four percent, you gave four percent across the board for all the part-time positions. But, in other offices, they have more than one, some of them have more than one part-time person, so they can adjust. You know, well, you're, you can work twenty-four hours this week and sixteen next week, but for her, it's a standard, it's always been four hours.
Four hours a day.
That's, that's where I'm coming from, that's all I'm.
Four days a week.
All I needed to say.
I mean, eleven ninety-eight is unacceptable for me as a council manager.
If you go downstairs and look in the rotunda, there are one, two, three, four, five, six jobs, part-time jobs. They all start out at least thirteen an hour, except the prosecutors, and it's eleven to fifteen. So I could go to the treasurer's office and work seasonal and get fifteen an hour. I could go to Carroll Manor or the transfer station and start out at thirteen an hour. So why not, at least get me the thirteen, but, get me what everybody else is getting, is what I'm asking.
Larry can pay you thirteen dollars an hour.
But, yes, he can. Down the road, it's gonna cut my hours. And with him being gone.
That's the crux of the argument. The hours is the crux of the argument. It's not the pay. It's the hours, it's the scheduling.
So then on the days that he's gone, whether it's an appointment or other things, training, there's no one to hold the office open.
Well, I think he could schedule you based on his, his availability. He could schedule you, as a manager, as a department head, he could schedule you based on when he needs to be out of the office and when he needs you to cover. Not just a blanket four hours a day times four days a week. That's just me personally, that's just my perception, my opinion.
So, I, I, we have a management issue that we need to discuss with Larry, but like, I, I think it's clear what the policy is, and that's why you're in the situation that you're in. And Larry's never discussed the office closures, like, we've never had a, a quality of service question come before us, like, this is all new, new information.
But he's just, I understand that, but he's just, he's gotten very sick in the last two weeks. And, I mean, very sick.
And, and, and the management is not our prerogative, we only deal in the dollars. So, the commissioners have to figure out what their service, you know, I mean, they're, well, I guess, I guess we're kind of in that.
I don't know, commissioners know that.
Yeah, like, this is, I mean, we're dealing with a quality of service issue, that's one thing. How much money does it take to run at the level of quality that we want? And then we have a compensation there. And so, compensation, I think, well, we have a motion on the floor, but we can, we can deal with that. I mean, that, that policy's pretty well set and precedent-ed across the board about how that's handled. This quality of service thing is something that we'll have to discuss with Larry when he, when he returns.
Call four eighty.
Okay. Alright, so we do have a motion on the floor by Paul Ryder, seconded by Doc Stoffer, to increase the part-time line to a total of twelve thousand four hundred eighty dollars, which would fund fifteen dollars an hour for the part-time employee in the VA office. Any, any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
The only thing I'd say is that, in reality, there's difference in management levels and capabilities. That's all I'll say.
And I don't disagree that that, that's something that could be debated, um, but, we haven't even had a request from the, the department head yet. So, I, I, I think that this just, I, I think that that's a worthwhile conversation, but we just haven't had that conversation thoroughly, and haven't reviewed the plan from the department head.
He's very sick, I mean.
He, but he's budget, he's requested it in the past, he requested fourteen an hour last year and fifteen an hour this year. So he has requested help and requested the additional.
And, and we cut it back, right, right Josh?
No.
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 We gave them the.
We increased it before.
The range. So then why's it still ninety-nine, ninety-nine fifty?
Because of the hours that she's working.
What did, would it take to bump it up? How many hours?
You'd have to work less hours. You would have to work less hours.
That's not even, that's not even feasible though. I mean, we, we need more hours 'cause he's not doing well. I, I don't know.
Which your motion reflects.
Yeah, okay.
So, I appreciate that, let's, uh.
Let's vote.
All those in favor of increasing the part-time line, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion fails two five.
And I think Josh had a good point in stating that it can, it can be fifteen dollars an hour and we won't even cross that particular bridge until maybe September or October. So there is time to talk about that, and, you know, he can request, Larry can request any amount, and that's, that's up to him, we give him the range, that's up to Larry to say, okay, she's getting fourteen fifty an hour. And then, you know, it's our job to set the monetary figure for the year.
I don't like the way you're saying that. Because what you're, what I'm getting from that is, go ahead and pay her the fifteen an hour and we'll deal with it in October, no?
Well, but, and I concur with that, but what I'm saying is that there is, there is time.
Yeah, there.
Yeah, there is time.
We don't encourage people to spend all you can and then come back to us, the, the council.
Right.
And say, hey, we're, we're two thousand short, we need two thousand dollars. I, I would not encourage that.
And she addressed that when she comes to the council.
And I.
Right, that, that was her concern is, if I go ahead and run through this money now, I'm not gonna be maybe employed later on. So that's, that's why I made my motion.
Well.
We got to vote on it, so.
And I absolutely agree, but what I'm saying is that it's, there's time to discuss it, I guess was my point.
We need, yeah, I mean, this is a policy issue at a service level. Like, what, what, what funding does it take to create what service? I mean, that's a, that's a conversation worth having that we've never had. And, but that's not the conversation, just like, we're gonna come in and just make all these changes now. I mean, there's enough wiggle room here that we can operate sad school for a month until Larry provides us a more thoughtful.
So you're either to jump your hours up right now while he's ill to.
If he's gonna be bombed, then yes, I told him I would help him out. But if I do that, then that's just gonna cut, every time I work more hours, that just cuts the time I can work.
We see that. But that's up to us to fix that or not fix it, you know what I mean? It's, it's in our ballpark now.
I would encourage you that if he is ill and he's missing a lot of time, that you need to go to the commissioners and ask what you, what, he needs to set up also with commissioners, what's gonna happen.
Yeah, because in his absence, the commissioners are the department head.
Yes.
So.
You also need to post on the door that you're only gonna be open your four hours or whatever.
I do that, when I leave, like, today when I leave at noon, I'll put on there, we have a, I have a, um, sign that says, I'm sorry, you're, you know, different things, we'll be back tomorrow at eight o'clock.
I do that every day, if it's gonna be for the whole week. People need to know if they come in, you know, someone driving from Burlington to come in.
Correct.
You know. They need to know.
Okay, I will let Larry know then, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh, next on the agenda is Jay Gaddis.
Sheriff?
Nope, sheriff.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry about that, Jay, sorry Tony.
Good morning, so, I'm here to talk about, you guys, I kind of looped in on the emails of the new jail and the IT and, and the county's responsibility part of that. Um, I brought Ron from BW Construction and Brian Messer from Sound Advice, so we could work through any questions. And, we're kind of on a time crunch, that something needs to be decided about that in the next, they need, they need to assume, two weeks.
Two, three weeks would be acceptable.
So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to get these guys up here and.
So what we've been presented with so far is that our county IT guy has not, doesn't feel like he can handle the new jail IT and, is that what I'm understanding?
I, I, he, I looped him in on a construction meeting, I was, I was finally able to get him to come on a meeting. And after it was described to him, and maybe I should let these guys say this better, that, that it was described to him what was needed. And, and his words in that meeting to me and everybody else was, well, maybe I should just back out, I'm a one-man show. He doesn't think he can, he can handle it.
This is new information.
He did say that, but he said that he didn't have enough time. Time to work, work it.
Yeah, not that he's not a qualified person for it.
So what's the solution then?
The sheriff's office since way before I was sheriff and nine-one-one of use, Sound Advice, we, we looped them in on that, uh, that meeting, I brought them here, IT's way above my head. I can't answer any of those questions. As I said in the email, I talked, in that meeting, I asked both Randy and Sound Advice, you know, is there something, can you guys give me a bid? Can, can you tell me a cost I can come up and tell the council? And they said, right now there's nothing to bid, they couldn't.
So what do we do?
And we had, we had.
We need an IT person to basically design, not the secure part of the jail, that's, that's already, is part of the build of the jail. This is for the other side of it.
So who can do that, like, sound solutions, can they?
Sound Advice. Sound Advice.
First of all, I remember the comment that John said, that we have all the departments coming that want IT people and IT things done. And I remember the sheriff stating that we need to, maybe possibly do the county as a whole, IT person instead of having this contract, this contract, this contract, is that not correct?
Don't we have the county, the county as a whole?
That is why, that is why I emailed him back stating, is there any way they could give a bid for Ivy, for everything as a whole?
And I, and I, as far as Sound Advice goes, and I don't wanna talk for them.
I think that's kind of a, a separate, I agree, I, I think we'd do a lot of things if we'd use the whole county as buying power per se,
that it would be a much cheaper way of doing it. I think this, the jail IT part, where we're at now is kind of separate.
We're having two conversations here.
Is kind of separate from, from that. This is, this is a new build versus ongoing maintenance and upkeep and stuff like that.
So is there any estimate of, of what, where this might go, I mean, any thoughts on it?
Seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars.
Wow, okay.
And, and, so the challenge, I guess, Sheriff, go to my job next to you.
Absolutely.
So, the, the challenge we're running into is that, you know, when, when you do a large project like this, it has to be architect design. So you guys spent some amount of dollars to get this jail. Or you were able to then use that to, you know, get together estimates and bids from contractors, okay? So, we're at a point now with the construction where, um, Ron, the construction manager, is recognizing that you have a lot of things that rely on your IT systems, that the one that's come up so far is your, your camera systems. And they're saying, hey, I need your IT person to tell me how they're going to design the infrastructure that we then rely on to provide services. Well, there is no design for that. The design for that happens by having conversations with the camera company and seeing seven ways that we could do it. And then we take what their requirements are, we take a look at the way sheriff, computers need to talk in the network and talk to your card access people, and in the end, we try to make sure that we design a single system where you're not paying to do things redundantly, you're not over-engineering, you're not under-engineering, okay? So, I said, hey, Sheriff, what has to happen from here is, you need to pay someone architect this, we're a hundred seventy-five dollars an hour. We're gonna spend forty, sixty, eighty hours in meetings with all the various systems that are part of the jail that, that Rob practically identified are your responsibility. And, and I apologize, and I thought I should've made seven copies of this, but Ron puts together a while ago that goes through, you guys, you guys are responsible, and when I say you're responsible, I mean, there's no design or budget as it relates to the jail for telecom systems, network equipment, racks, patch panels, computers, servers, monitors, all of these things.
Can I ask one question? So, um, you're saying the solution is two hundred thousand dollars or the arc, or the design is two hundred thousand?
No, 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 what I'm saying is the solution could be seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
The design work would normally be seven to ten thousand dollars. For all of these projects, that's kind of a rough idea of our hours. Now, Sheriff has always done a great job, and Brad, nine-one-one center, where, working kind of with us with tight budgets to, to try to, so we've been pro bono up to this point. The whole reason this conversation happened, as I said, Sheriff, we're at a point where we need to start talking about charges happening. Sheriff said, hey, I can't approve you guys doing engineering rates. Sheriff helped me understand that we really are under some tight budget, so we're perfectly happy to go through the design work pro bono, if we end up being the ones doing the project. But what I didn't want to have happen is, we go through three months of design, we put together proposals, you guys see seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars that you weren't aware of. You say, Brian, I need to have other people bid this, and I say, great, that'll be seven to ten thousand dollars for my design work. That seems really not well-sphered in hindsight, right? So I'm more than happy just to clock in and be your engineer like we do for our large and small project projects like this. Uh, we can just do that and, and go down the standard path, but I'm also happy to do it pro bono. Just because, Sheriff has really done a great job and so has Brad.
So, what I'm hearing is that you don't know how much it's gonna cost in the end and you want us just to give you free range to spend ten to two hundred thousand dollars.
Not at all, no, what I want you to.
Like, maybe an up to ten thousand, right? Like, in design.
Yeah, we could actually say like, not to exceed, and what I'm saying is if we end up doing the project for you, just as a gesture of goodwill or trying to help, we won't charge for the engineering time. But I am, the, the standard practice is, I architect and engineer this just like you paid the architect, I hand it to you, you go take it and have it bid up. I am perfectly fine to do that for you if that's what you prefer. If you say, Brian, I'll just approve seven to ten thousand dollars, you engineer it, we'll send it out to bid. I'm perfectly fine with that relationship as well.
So, um, Ron, sorry, so. So, if the consequences for not making a decision on this would be that this, this system is not engineered and we may have to come in back later and, and re-engineer a system, it may or may not cost more to re-engineer the building after it's completed.
We don't move now, we won't get the, you won't be able to use the things when we turn it over. So, what we have in our scope is to provide the conduits and the raceways to get to the TVs, the projector, the computers in the offices and things like that. What we don't have is pulling the wire, the final terminations, or the infrastructure setup, that's outside of our secure systems. That's where the county would come in and set up their own computers, phones, et cetera, et cetera. So we have contracted with Broadway Broadband for the service to come to the building. Once we hit their D mark location, then we need the county to take it from there to get to the final connections.
Right.
And to set up the server racks.
But, so, I mean, I'm, I'm just dealing in worst-case scenario, so if we said, to heck with this, we don't wanna spend any money.
You won't have phones, computers.
Okay, I mean, I said that, okay, that's what I, I, I thought that was the concept.
You won't have no working.
So, alternatively, we can contract with someone to engineer a solution, then you guys can move forward.
Correct.
All of the infrastructure will be in there, and at that time, then we can decide who is our vendor for constructions, or, I mean, for product, or the, the equipment at that time.
At some point in time, we will need to set up coordination meetings with the Poly Jail Company and Accurate Controls, as they are the security and infrastructure, to work hand-in-hand with whoever you choose to be your IT consultant to get all of your systems finalized.
Part of the challenge is those conversations are happening quite literally today, meaning that the camera system company said if they don't have decisions on what the IT infrastructure design is within a week or two, they will not hit your timeline for installation, meaning you will not have cameras when the system is installed. So the challenge is, if you have me engineer the solution, and there's ten different ways I can set up a network, and I provide them with information over the course of the next two or three months on how to do this, and then you decide, hey, we're gonna have some other vendor take care of it. Now, they would then restart the engineering process, and then separately, if they had built off of that what I've told them we're doing for three months, and then someone else says, we're gonna do differently, you may have additional costs for them to then re-engineer the systems that I helped them engineer. And again, my intention is not to try to trap you into me giving, giving you a blank check. It's to help you understand the implications of these decisions proactively, that's all.
So you said seven to ten thousand, is that what we would do to, um, decide today to get the solution going then? If we said up to twelve thousand?
If you said, Brian, if I need to know that you can't spend a dollar over twelve thousand dollars worth of engineering time, please start working on this so that we can make progress as quickly as possible, then yes.
Will that be enough to get your solution going to see what we are gonna have?
Yes.
But the, the commissioners have to enter that contract.
Between you and I, I'm perfectly fine.
Considering they're in the process.
Nothing's been decided.
I, I think I just, so, I'm sorry, we were having a little bit of sidebar. Uh, the question for us is, are we gonna make these funds available? We can't enter into the agreement, right? So, if we say, but, but my question to Beth was, is there any money sitting appropriated that we could authorize for this? And I don't, I, we, we can't think of an, an example yet where that would be. So we, our action today would be, you know, we're blessing, we're gonna advertise, but we can't authorize it until next month.
I guess what I would say, I'm not gonna go from zero to twelve thousand dollars in the next thirty days. So kind of along the lines of, there's some decision that has to happen today, I'm perfectly happy to say, Brian, don't get more than a grand or two in over the next, you know, two weeks or a month or so, and then we'll let you know when everything's been officially approved. I'm perfectly happy proceeding.
I have a question. Can this be presented to the commissioners on February the fifth? And then they appropriate the money on February the fifteenth, would that be okay?
Um, so based on our last conversation with the camera companies, they, they stated that would cause delays in being able to meet the existing timeline for completion of the project.
So I guess the reason why I'm here today is to get that semi-okay, and then I'll go to the commissioners and we'll have the same exact conversation. So. But, but it does no good to go talk to them and they come here and you guys say no.
Yeah, whatever it is.
That's how it's supposed to happen.
Monday, and we would've been doing it today.
Yeah, you need to go to commissioners first.
Well, but, we, we can, from my perspective.
Again, they're in the Lisbon.
Oh, I mean, they're talking, it's just gotta get done, so, the only question is, are we gonna appropriate the money? I, I think we should just advertise the money out of County General, it'll be the simplest. And then, uh, the, we, like, so, i- if we agree to advertise it, commissioners can enter into an agreement in whatever that is. Right? And then the, that when we would appropriate in, on our February fifteenth meeting, does that make you feel comfortable?
A lot of those things I don't understand, but what I'm hearing is, get to where, don't go too far, then in thirty days we'll have a more.
We, we can't, because, you have to appropriate money to spend it. So the appropriation process takes thirty days.
Yeah.
There was no existing appropriation for this, so what we have to do is advertise it in the newspaper, and then some period of time after that, we can approve it. So the next opportunity we would have to approve it is in February fifteenth, but the commissioners could enter into the agreement.
The fifth.
The fifth.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, and your, your thirty days.
Absolutely.
Is not, I mean, the fifteenth is not the thirty days yet.
Yeah, and, and, so from my perspective, if you're just asking from a, from a billing perspective as far as, at what point am I gonna be requesting funds? I'm not worried about getting any money in the next thirty days, if you're saying, Brian, on good faith, please proceed forward.
That's not what we're asking.
Okay.
We, we, we just can't.
You're saying you can't even give any kind of commitment whatsoever.
We can't turn you free and say, spend this, spend that, and we'll pay you thirty days, we do not.
The only thing we do is make money available.
Yes.
The commissioners will want to enter.
You will have to sign a contract and.
Yeah, but, but yes, I, 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 if, if I was to say, do I think this is fine? Like, I would say that ninety percent of the time or more, if the council makes money available, that the commissioners enter, enter into an agreement. And I can't just say that they would sign the contract with you, but if, if, if that's the recommendation.
Yeah, so I guess, let me, I, I guess I'll, I'll answer your question by asking your question. If you were in my position, and you presented the same information, knowing that it's up to you guys how important it is to not delay the construction of this project. And that's, that's really Ron's thing, okay? So, we, we had a meeting with the camera company seven to ten days ago, when they said they really need to start working on this in two weeks, so that would be, you know, beginning of next week. We're gonna tell them, hey, we really can't commit anything for about a month or so, so that may push back the camera system installation for a month, okay? You guys understand better than I do that, that ninety percent, okay? So if you were in my shoes, would you start doing work on this feeling reasonably confident that in the end, if I put in eight hours and all of a sudden I have fourteen hundred dollars wrapped up in this, that that fourteen hundred dollars is gonna go to somebody? Or that I'm gonna be stuck holding the bill for?
I can't say that there's no risk in it, but I wouldn't feel.
I would suggest to Ron that if you want something done, you better come two to three months in advance. That's just how government works.
Yeah, but we're past that point now.
Yeah. But in the future.
Josh, make a motion.
Don't wait then, don't wait for two, three weeks.
I don't need an answer.
We can't work that fast.
So.
Then it should've been your turn.
Just one at a time, one at a time.
I moved to Adam, it's twelve thousand dollars out of County General.
I, I, I do, I do have a point of clarification, he said seven to ten. You just jumped to twelve, I don't understand the difference.
I think you have a pair of shoes on.
Yeah, I, I, whatever, I'm not, I didn't put any number in stone, all I heard was seven thousand to two hundred thousand. I'm not taking you back when I was here.
Different things.
One was a design fee of seven to ten.
I'm gonna turn the tables here a little bit, you said, if you were in, if I were, I asked, were in your shoes, well, what if you were in my shoes?
No, I think you guys are in a hard spot.
The contract needs to be signed before they, I mean, and then the commissioners ask them for the money, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, no, no.
We don't do it backwards, and we've had a department head get in trouble because of that.
And to be fair, I wasn't, um, trying to get that clarification because I was trying to push you towards a decision. I was trying to understand, you guys understand my risk better than I do, so, again, you guys understand the, the ramifications of pushing back the completion of the camera system, those secure systems, thirty days, better than I do versus the ramifications of us ready, fire, aiming here and then creating a bigger problem, so.
Yeah, he doesn't care about the timeline.
Uh, you know, I, I want to advocate. I want to advocate him to be happy.
Shining does, but.
I have nine people to make happy that all have different ways to be made happy here, I just want everyone in the room to decide how to be happiest. I just want you to, yeah, go ahead. So, no, yeah, that.
So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we advertise ten, not twelve?
Yeah.
It's it. I just said it 'cause Tracy said it, so, uh, ten is fine.
Yeah, I'm reasonably confident ten gets us to completion unless we run into a whole lot of complex systems that I'm aware. The flip side is, along this, the, the kind of the second conversation that you broached, that I don't know that's part of this agenda, is, you know, the IT infrastructure across county, as far as I'm aware, and Tony and Brad can help me out, there's no IT person for the county. Like typically what I'm.
There is.
There is. Randy.
Well, so when you say Randy's the IT person for the county, he's not been to the nine-one-one center. We're the ones that get the calls from nine-one-one center, or the sheriff.
We have different ones.
Certain, certain departments.
IT for county offices and like Carroll Manor and like Highway is Randy. The other, for the jail, has different, and so does the nine-one-one.
Okay.
Correct?
Essentially, yes. Which makes no sense, but yes.
Well, it's them, right, for us and the nine-one-one, it's the same company, yeah.
So, when, when the time, so part of this design.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's to advertise an additional.
Yeah.
We don't need to.
Eric just read.
Well, I suggest it just gets on the record that it's been done.
Okay. Alright, uh. Josh made the motion to advertise, what was your amount, Josh?
Uh, I'm just thinking twelve thousand.
Okay, advertised twelve thousand out of County General. Was there a second to that?
I'll second.
Who was it?
You guys aren't wrestling for it.
Everybody.
Alright, Taylor, Taylor seconded. Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, motion carries, we will advertise for twelve thousand dollars. And then, yeah, for, for the, uh.
Architective design.
Architective design of.
Which you said would fall off if you guys got the whole project?
Uh, yeah, we have, if we do the project, well, I'm not, I'm gonna pro bono that time.
Great, thank you.
I have one question, I'll reiterate this one more time, is, a lot of this stuff is correct, gonna come up, one by one? All of a sudden we don't have this, we don't need this, and this is my question to him and him. Do we have anything set up for this move?
We're just working on it.
Set up, set up?
No.
Yeah, as far as.
That I emailed you are.
What do you mean by set up?
Like, do we have any, any program or any committee or any one counselor, one, I mean, one commission, any group that is going to head up this huge move? Instead of coming in here one at a time and, I mean, I don't see this being very proactive. I think we need a group.
You guys got a copy of this too, so that, that's the whole.
This might add to the clarification, this is a role of responsibilities matrix that's broken up between what we as the construction managers will provide and install, what the county will provide and we install, and then what the county provides and installs on their own. So this is a two-page document that I reviewed with Sheriff and with Sound Advice. There is not a lot on here outside of IT that the county is providing. So really the IT is the big, the big-ticket item.
As far as.
F F and E, right?
Well.
Correct.